Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
Please raise your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we have a few closed session items to report. Regarding item 3.1, Confidential Student Matters, student case number 18, in a motion by trustee Smolin and seconded by trustee Pine, with a 5-0 vote, the board accepted the recommendation by staff. Regarding item 3.2, Confidential Student Matters, student case number 20, in a motion by trustee Smolin and seconded by trustee Gibran, with a 5-0 vote, the board accepted the recommendation by staff. Item 3.3, Conference with Labor Negotiators, no action taken. Item 3.4, Conference with Labor Negotiators, no action taken. Item 3.5, Confidential Student Matters, in a motion by clerk of the board Lebel and seconded by myself, with a 5-0 vote, the board accepted the recommendation by staff. Item 3.6, Confidential Student Matters, in a motion by trustee Pine, seconded by trustee Gibran, with a 5-0 vote, the board accepted the recommendation by staff. Item 3.7, Compromise and Release, in a motion by trustee Gibran, seconded by trustee Pine, with a 5-0 vote, the board accepted the recommendation by staff. Item 3.8, Public Employment Matters, considering the appointment of a middle school assistant principal in a, with a motion by trustee Smolin and seconded by myself, in a 5-0 vote, Corinne Musgrove was appointed as assistant principal at Sinaloa.
And we have good news. Mrs. Musgrove is here with us tonight. And she actually went through a very challenging and deep pool when she applied. And we are fortunate enough to have given her an interview. She rose to the very top of the list for Sinaloa Middle School. And Mr. Sean Rumble is here tonight as well to support this recommendation. And Corinne Musgrove actually comes to us with a wealth of experience from private industry. She recently has been a middle school teacher at Redwood Middle School in Kaneho. And it's been such a pleasure to meet her. And we are very fortunate to have her as a member of our Simi Valley Schools family. I look forward to a meeting with you in the coming weeks. And please, Mrs. Musgrove, you can come up to the podium if you'd like to say something.
Well, good evening, President. Bhagdasandi, oh gosh, Bhagdasag, sorry. Bhagdasarian, I knew that that was going to be a problem. Clerk, Board, Lebel, trustees Pine, Smolin, Dubrian, Superintendent Youssef, and district staff. As you know, my name is Corinne Musgrove. And I'm very honored and just grateful for this opportunity to serve as the new vice principal at Sinaloa Middle School. I've been following your district for a long time and just so impressed with all the amazing work that you're doing to support students, families, and the community. I believe in the power of education to transform lives. And I'm dedicated to creating safe, inclusive, and equitable learning environments for students of all backgrounds and abilities. I believe that every student has unique gifts and talents to offer the world. And I am very excited to work in collaboration with Simi Valley Unified to continue to lift up all students and inspire each and every student to succeed in school, career, and life. I believe that true leadership starts with self-awareness and a commitment to lifelong learning and personal growth. Through a process of self-reflection and learning, I will strive daily to continuously improve myself as a leader in your district and as a global citizen. I will be dedicated to creating positive change, to making meaningful impact on the lives of those around me and contributing to a brighter future for us all. I'm passionate about building strong connections with others. And I strive to create safe and supportive learning communities where everyone feels valued and heard. I'm committed to inviting diverse groups of people to the table, recognizing that our differences make us stronger and that working together, we can achieve great things for our community and, most importantly, for our students. Above all else, I'm excited to meet and support all of the students, the families, and the staff at Sinaloa Middle School in the upcoming school year. And I just wanted to thank you again for this amazing opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, congratulations. We're glad to have you here. And I have been told wonderful things about you. I see your principal behind you smiling brightly. So, welcome to Simi Valley.
Item 3.9, Public Employment Matters, considering the appointment of a high school assistant principal in a motion by trustee Gibran and seconded by trustee Pine, with a 5-0 vote, Jordan Hoffman was appointed as assistant principal at Royal High School.
Trustees and everybody in attendance, we hit the lottery twice in the same application pool. Jordan Hoffman was the number one selection for Mr. Hall, the principal at Royal High School, who's here, and his team on the panel. And we couldn't be more excited. So currently, she is a teacher and was a bargaining unit representative at Los Virginus Unified School District. And she has completed her admin credential. And in speaking to her superintendent, he said she was on our radar to hire her. And you're getting a really good one. You're getting a very hardworking individual and a very smart individual. And we could not be more excited to have Jordan Hoffman as our newest Highlander at Royal High. Please feel free to come to the podium.
Thank you, President Bhagdasarian and clerk Lebel, and to the trustees, Gibran and Smolin and Pine. And thank you, Dr. Youssef, as well. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to serve Simi Valley at Royal. I had the pleasure of watching my two sisters graduate through Simi schools. And they have done nothing but thrive in their careers and personal lives. So I'm really, you know, my family is indebted to the Simi schools. And it means so much to me to be back here serving the community that has brought my family so much. So thank you very much. I wanted to thank Michael Hall for believing in my potential and seeing, you know, through through all of my rambling in the interviews that, you know, there might be something there to me. So I really appreciate that. And to, to Dr. Youssef and the rest of the cabinet for trusting me with this very important position. It means a lot. So I hope that I can be the administrator and leader that Royal deserves. Thank you.
Although we represent all schools in the district, as a Highlander alum, wish she the best and do the best for our students and the community. So, welcome and good luck to you.
I will add to that. Coming from the Lost Virginus, where I came from, to Royal High School, we're the same. Welcome.
Is your mic on, trustee Lebel?
Yeah, it's just not down. Your mic's good.
He's got a, he's got a booming principal voice. So he doesn't need it.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you. So items 3.10 through 3.16, we will defer to the action calendar where we will report at that time. So, let's see, where am I? Okay, now we move to item C, Approval of the Action Agenda.
To approve the agenda.
Yes.
To approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gibran, seconded by trustee Pine. Roll call, roll call vote, trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Trustee Gibran?
Aye.
Clerk Lebel?
Aye.
And President Bhagdasarian.
Aye. Item D, Approval of the Minutes.
Motion by Smolin?
Second.
Seconded by Pine. Roll call vote, trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Trustee Gibran?
Aye.
Clerk Lebel?
Abstain.
President Bhagdasarian?
Aye.
For the record, clerk Lebel was not in attendance at the last board meeting.
Item E, Communications. At this point in the meeting, visitors and employee organizations may address items not on the agenda. So first, we have item 1, Presentations, 1.1, the CBOC report.
I'm going to ask our associate superintendent, Mr. Ron Tora, to introduce this item.
So this item is actually under information later. But we asked Ali Sherman, who is now the publicity chair for the CBOC, to come do the report this evening to the board. So come on up, Ali Sherman.
Good evening, and thank you for accommodating me earlier in the agenda. Dear members, Board of Education members and interested members of the public, the Simi Valley Measure X Citizens Fund Oversight Committee, the CBOC, is pleased to present its annual report for the Simi Valley Unified School District, fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Our independent CBOC was established, as required by law, to actively monitor all Measure X projects and expenditures, provide proper oversight, control, and accountability to ensure that Measure X bond funds are used as they were intended, and to inform the public concerning the district's expenditure of bond proceeds. Measure X is a $239 million bond measure approved by voters on November 8, 2016, authorizing funding for the design and construction of new buildings, modernization of existing school facilities, and modern technology within SVUSD. As members of the CBOC, our primary responsibility is to ensure bond proceeds are used appropriately and only spent for the construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or replacement of school facilities as listed in Measure X. Our duties also include informing the public if the bond proceeds are used effectively to enhance the quality of education for the students of the Simi Valley Unified School District. We are happy to report that the district has made significant progress in accomplishing improvements to the schools with the bond funds despite the recent challenges presented by the pandemic, supply chain, supply chain issues, and inflation. The original plans for the projects have been impacted by the rising costs of construction materials and labor, resulting in a reduction in the number of projects originally anticipated. Nonetheless, the district has managed to move forward with many important projects. During the 2122 fiscal year, the district was able to complete several important projects using Measure X funds, including security fencing and curb appeal, the Royal High School boys locker rooms, Apollo High School received flooring abatement and new flooring in two rooms, Santa Susana High School irrigation project in preparation for the future Black Box Theater building, Valley View stairs were completed, Vista classrooms were remodeled, and continuous technology upgrades, including Microsoft Surface Pros for every student, et cetera. The committee's oversight has led us to the conclusion that the Measure X projects have made a significant positive impact on the quality of education and the learning environment for the students of the Simi Valley Unified School District. The district has received funds from the Bond Series A, B, and C for a total of $189.8 million, general obligation bonds, which are being utilized for implementation of Measure X projects. Series A was $70 million in June of 2017. Series B was $60 million in May of 2019. And Series C was $59.8 million in October of 2020. The committee is aware that the district is planning to bring a fourth and final series to market under the Measure X authorization. This future Series D is anticipated to be for the amount of $49.2 million at a date that is yet to be determined. While the progress made with the Measure X funds has been significant, our committee's oversight has made it apparent that additional funding will be necessary to continue to maintain and make improvements to our schools in the future. We recognize that inflation, largely related to the pandemic, has made it more challenging to complete projects at the expected cost. And we will continue to work closely with the district to ensure that all future bond funds are used efficiently and effectively. We would like to extend our gratitude to the Board of Education for their ongoing support and dedication to the education of the students in the Simi Valley Unified School District. We also appreciate the support of the taxpayers who have made these important improvements possible. This report will be posted to the CBOC's page on the district's website, following its presentation to the board. And I would like to thank our committee chair, Josh Bengers, who has led us beautifully and also drafted this wonderful report for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you. I was on the CBOC when it formed, and it seems like a few years ago now. It's very important to have the oversight with the community, reviewing what we're doing. And in your role as publicity chair, getting that good word out about completion of projects. It was a lot of fun to be able to tag along on the upper quad completion at Simi High, to see that and see the renderings and seeing how that's really changed the campus there. And they're working on the lower quad as well in some of those classrooms. So thank you for giving your time and volunteering for this and being a part of, you know, important stewardship of the taxpayer dollar, of which I, you know, contribute mine as well. So, and that was a great report. So thank you so much for your time.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your service. At this time, we will move to item 2, Public Comments. None this evening, okay. Item 3, we will convene a public hearing regarding the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, for 2023, 2024.
Are there any public comments at all regarding the LCAP? Seeing none?
Okay. Seeing none, we will adjourn the public hearing. I don't need to do the gavel, right?
No.
Item 4, we will convene a public hearing regarding the proposed budget for 2023, 2024. Are there any public comments? Being that there aren't any, we will adjourn the public hearing. Item 5, Employee Organization Comments.
Nope.
Item 6, Superintendent Communication.
I do have a communication on that one. Thank you. So, first of all, I know she just left. But Ali Sherman, as trustee Gibran pointed out, these are all volunteer positions that we have in our community and the work that we're able to do with the Measure X bond funds. You know, it goes to serve all of our students across the district in so many different capacities. And it's going to go to serve students in the future who aren't even at those schools yet. So to your point, it's a lot of great work. And thank you to all of the residents in Simi Valley who supported Measure X. And we continue to, you know, really do some good things with those dollars that we would never be able to do for our students and our schools. And congratulations again to Corinne Musgrove and to Jordan Hoffman. We are so excited to have you onboard. And we look forward to all the great things that you're going to be able to do. Of course, in addition to everything that you bring to our school district, I know that our school district will have a lot to offer to you as well. And you have two great mentors in Sean Rumble and Michael Hall as experienced principals. Now, you're more than, I like that, Mr. Hall. So we're excited for Royal, and we're excited for Sinaloa. June 2 was our last day of the school year. And that week, that entire last week of May, we had a number of promotions, elementary schools and promotions at middle schools, and of course, graduations at high schools. A lot of excitement. And it really summed up what has turned out to be an exciting year, a successful year. And to hear where a lot of our seniors are going, it truly exemplifies the "from here to anywhere" motto that we carry. Because our students are going to the workplace, they're going to the military, they're going to a number of different universities, two-year colleges, four-year universities. So very exciting times. And I know that we're in summer mode right now, but the work has not stopped. And there is no shortage of really good work for our schools and our students. Hiring season continues. And we're bringing onboard a lot of very experienced and knowledgeable educators and administrators and leaders like Mrs. Musgrove and Mrs. Hoffman to our district. And here's what we do know. That summer doesn't mean, you know, your typical summer vacation for our educators. Because anybody who's ever taught or been in a classroom knows that the vast majority of our teachers are still working over the summer, whether they're working in summer school or preparing for the fall. And finally, what I want to do is thank our our stakeholders across the board, from our parents and guardians, to our community members, to all of our employees, to our school board for your leadership. Everyone contributed to make the 2223 school year, the successful school year that it was, was a perfect no. However, a lot of really good things came from it. And we've highlighted those throughout the school year. And of course, all the community partners, even yesterday, the Education Foundation with the golf tournament. And it really does and truly take a village. And I believe that Simi Valley Schools and the Simi Valley community is a great model of what that means. And I just thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Youssef. At this time, we will move to item 7, Board Communication, in this order, trustee Gibran, trustee Smolin, trustee Pine, and clerk of the board, Lebel, and then myself.
All right, thank you. I'll, I'll be brief to keep the trains running on time. So, welcome to our new administrators, to the new chapter. We wish you all the best. Again, thank you to the CBOC for their report. I was able to go to Hollow Hills Salute America right around Memorial Day. That was a fantastic event. And, you know, every grade level had their own patriotic song. And I got to sit next to some of the people up here and enjoy that and bring it all in. So I also was able to go to Royal High School for, just to see the East Quad has been completed there, hang out with Mr. Hall, see how many names he's learned for all of his students over the course of the school year. I think he's up to, you know, 500, 600, 700, 800, who knows? And the NPR has been completed. I know they're tuning it up. But that's something that we all sat here and talked about years ago. And it's been years in planning and in the making. And it's going to be something fantastic for the new school year opening up next year as well. So I was able to go to a number of graduations, Simi Institute, Sinaloa, Royal High School, Santa Susana High School. Unfortunately, I had to miss Apollo because we had a hearing that ran late. But duty called. And we was able to catch the tail end there and just say congratulations to everybody at Apollo. It's always a fantastic one to attend. And then I was able to make it to the Education Foundation Golf Tournament. So I had a few good ones there, you know? It was a team effort because together, everyone achieves more. So thank you for your time. And I'll pass it off to the next person.
Thank you. So a few things that I got to be involved in. I attended the HSA, which, if you don't know, is the honorary service awards through PTA. And almost every school had their champions that helped every day, whether they were teachers or parents or administrators. And we appreciate all those volunteers that put their time and effort into our schools every single day. Portfolio Day at Sinaloa Middle School. It's always nice to hear what kids are planning, what they've accomplished, what they've overcome, them sharing. It's funny because I ran this program at a different middle school at one time. And they used to come in with spiral notebooks and, and information. And now, you know, with everything being digital and them coming with their surfaces, it's so much more professional to look at. And just as impressive, so.
Thank you, Measure X.
I love that day. And yeah, and that was all provided by Measure X, which I was on that committee. So I attended Simi Valley High School's graduation, which, you know, coincides with our other, some of our other high school graduations. And for the first time that, in my memory, got like rained on. So it's been an interesting year for all of us. Got to attend Mona Vista's promotion. And didn't quite make Apollo's graduation, but made it onto their campus. I will say, when it comes to our smaller schools and their graduates, they get to spend a little bit more time in discussing those students' accomplishments. And it makes those, those just a little bit extra special because of their small setting. I also have a position on the Education Foundation. And yesterday was our golf tournament. I saw many faces that are in this room and across our community, supporting our students and our teachers. Obviously, the Education Foundation is a nonprofit that provides grants and scholarships, grants to teachers and scholarships to students. So that's always a really great time. And it's wonderful to see a good turnout. Congratulations to our new administrators. Don't be scared when we come visit you because we will be there. We make it our business. I would like to wish everybody a safe and productive summer, from our students, to our parents, and to our entire Simi Valley Unified family.
Okay. Welcome, everyone who's here this evening or watching along at home. Congratulations to our two new vice principals. Look forward to visiting you on your new campuses in the fall. I was also able to attend the HSA awards, honoring the variety of, or the number of school volunteers throughout this past year. And that was a really nice evening and a wonderful just event to recognize the amount of hours that are put in to support our students and our school events run by our PTA and PTSAs. I was able to attend Mona Vista's high school graduation and echo what trustee Smolin said. The smaller setting there, it was, I mean, the graduations are all lovely. And, you know, they, they're all different in their own way. But it was really, it was a very meaningful ceremony to meet, for that to be like the first high school graduation that I got to attend in the district this year. It was, there were lots of, lots of tears. And it was a very meaningful ceremony. I also attended Hillside Middle School's promotion and Royal's graduation also rained on. It was kind of a crazy evening. But I want to congratulate all of our graduates and congratulate just all of our students and teachers on a wonderful year and a lot of hard work that was done. And I wish everyone a restful summer and a little bit of a break before we gear up for next year.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll be brief. First of all, welcome to the new assistant principals. Those gentlemen behind you need all the help they can get. So just, just to take care of it, we'll tell you right now in advance. I know them both. I was able to go to the Sinaloa Career Day, Noel's Special Day, Hollow Hills Salute to America. And congratulations to all graduates. And have a great summer. And that's it. Yeah, move quickly.
Sorry. Okay. First, congratulations to our new administrative appointments. Welcome to the district and best wishes with, you know, all you have to do. Thank you to Ms. Sherman for the CBOC report. And also, I just wanted to thank the committee out there in TV land for their very important service. And I also was able to attend some of the graduations. I wish I could go to all of them. It's my favorite season. So maybe we can work it out to where they're not all like on the same day or time or, and we and we can go to them all. But congratulations to all the graduates. I know you're going to achieve great things. And yeah, just happy summer to everybody. Okay, item F, the Consent Calendar. Are there any questions or do we have a motion to approve? If there are no questions, then I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Bagdad Sarian, seconded by Trustee Smolin. Roll call vote, Trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Trustee Gibran?
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle?
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Okay, moving on to G, the Action Calendar. See, item one, Board Administration. So Government Code Section 54953(c)(3) requires that before taking final action, the Board must orally report a summary of the recommendation regarding the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of local agency executives. Therefore, I am making the following summary regarding such items appearing on the agenda. Item 1.1 pertains to final action by the Board regarding the recommendation to approve the agreement for employment of the district's local agency executive. Mr. Dan Houghton, sorry, in the position of Assistant Superintendent Personnel Services. The recommended salary increase is $6,359.17 and with medical benefits provided to other managers. Other compensation elements are listed in the agreement.
Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion by LaBelle, seconded by Trustee Smolin. Roll call vote, Trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Trustee Gibran?
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle?
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Item 1.2 pertains to the final action by the Board regarding the recommendation to approve the agreement for employment of the district's local agency executive. Ms. Julie Ellis in the position of Assistant Superintendent Personnel Services. The recommended salary is $188,334.78 and with medical benefits provided to other managers. Other compensation elements are listed in the agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Gibran, seconded by Pine. Roll call vote, Trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Trustee Gibran?
Aye.
Clerk of the Board, LaBelle?
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye.
And with that, we are so fortunate to have Mrs. Julie Ellis, assuming the role of Assistant Superintendent Personnel Services effective July 1st. Not only is Mrs. Ellis a graduate of Simi Valley Schools, not only is she a member of the Simi Valley Community, she's also a parent in our community as well and brings a wealth of knowledge, experience, and skills to the position. And we could not be more excited to have Mrs. Julie Ellis as our next Assistant Superintendent of Personnel Services. Would you like to say something, Mrs. Ellis? All right.
Good evening, President of the Board, Bagdad Sarian, Clerk LaBelle, Trustees Pine, Smolin, and Gibran. I stand before you, humbled and honored, to accept the position of Assistant Superintendent of Personnel Services. Your ongoing support and belief in my abilities have brought me to this remarkable moment. Tonight, I would like to express my deepest gratitude to all those who have played a significant role in my journey. First and foremost, I'd like to thank my family who is here tonight. My husband continues to be my greatest support and sounding board. My two amazing kids are my world and a constant reminder and motivation to continue to find ways to support our students, all of our students, to find success not only in school, but in life. Collectively, they have shown me an abundance of grace in sharing me with my greater Simi Valley Unified family. I also want to thank my mentors. These incredible individuals saw potential in me long before I saw it in myself, one of which is here tonight, Ron Toto. They believed in my capacity to lead and make a difference, not for personal gain, but to empower others in their educational growth. Their guidance and inspiration have shaped me into the leader I am today. And I will forever be grateful for their unwavering support. Throughout my 29-year tenure in Simi Valley Unified School District, I've had the privilege of serving in various roles. From my first position of walk-on coach and substitute teacher, I have been fortunate enough to spend two-thirds of my career teaching Simi Valley students and fostering their love for learning. When I stepped out of the classroom into the roles of teacher on special assignment, site principal, and director, I continued to have the opportunity to foster a love for learning through the transformative power of collaboration and the collective efficacy of our dedicated and talented employees, even during the most challenging of times. As I embark on this new chapter as Assistant Superintendent of Personnel Services, I am acutely aware of the immense responsibility that lies before me. However, I am comforted by the fact that I have been mentored by a true legend, Dan Houghton, someone who understands the value of placing the human in human resources. His humanistic approach reminds us that our district's success depends on the well-being and growth of each employee. In closing, I want to express my heartfelt appreciation to the Board for this incredible opportunity. I will continue to serve the district with dedication, integrity, and a deep commitment to support and develop the potential within our employees as I believe they are the most critical element to ensure our students reach their potential. Together, we will continue to elevate our educators, staff, and most importantly, our students, to new heights of excellence. Thank you once again for your trust in me. I am truly grateful.
Trustees?
Well, congratulations, Julie. Your time spent this last year, I'm sure will serve you well moving forward. And I'm really grateful that the decision was made to mentor someone well and thoroughly because I know it's a very, very important position, especially because you help direct where the people that we hire and where this where this all goes. So thank you for the work that you've done. Looking forward to see what you do.
Congratulations.
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 Best of luck to you. Take care of our people and no pressure. We're all counting on you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Ellis.
Okay, item 2.1 pertains to final action by the Board regarding the recommendation to approve the agreement for employment of the district's local agency executive. Mr. Ron Toto in the position of Associate Superintendent Business Services. The recommended salary is $7,556.33 and with medical benefits provided to other managers. Other compensation elements are listed in the agreement.
I'm sorry, you gonna take a look at that? The recommended salary increase.
Oh. I thought that was.
Thought we were getting a deal.
So moved.
Sorry, give me a minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you read that one more time?
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Ron Toto in the position of Associate Superintendent Business Services. The recommended salary increase is $7,556.33 and with medical benefits provided to other managers. Other compensation elements are listed in the agreement. Item 2.2.
Need a motion?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Gibran, seconded by Pine. Roll call vote, Trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Trustee Gibran?
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle?
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Thank you. Item 2.2 pertains to the final action by the Board regarding the recommendation to approve the agreement for employment of the district's local agency executive. Mr. Sean Goldman in the position of Assistant Superintendent Department of Student Support Services, Division of Educational Services. The recommended salary increase is $6,173.96 and with medical benefits provided to other managers. Other compensation elements are listed in the agreement.
So moved, second.
Motion by Smolin, seconded by Pine. Roll call vote, Trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Trustee Gibran?
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle?
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Item 2.3 pertains to final action by the Board regarding the recommendation to approve the agreement for employment of the district's local agency executive. Mr. Jerry Block in the position of Assistant Superintendent Department of Schools and Programs, Division of Educational Services. The recommended salary increase is $11,135.53 and with medical benefits provided to other managers. Other compensation elements are listed in the agreement.
Move of approval, second.
Motion by Pine, seconded by Smolin. Roll call vote, Trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Trustee Gibran?
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle?
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Item 2.4 pertains to final action by the Board regarding the recommendation to approve the agreement for employment of the district's local agency executive. Dr. Jamie Snodgrass in the position of Assistant Superintendent Department of Instruction and Pupil Services, Division of Educational Services. The recommended salary is $188,334.78 and with medical benefits provided to other managers. Other compensation elements are listed in the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by LaBelle, seconded by Gibran. Roll call vote, Trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Trustee Gibran?
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle?
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
No.
Motion passes four to one. Congratulations, Dr. Snodgrass. And Dr. Snodgrass, again, we are very fortunate to have in our district. She graduated from Simi Valley Schools. She lives in the community and she obviously is a parent in our community as well. And Dr. Snodgrass, for the last number of years that she's been in our district, has assumed a number of different positions. Most recently, she's been the Director of Instruction and Pupil Services and does absolutely amazing work to support all students. And we are very fortunate to have you as our next and our newest Assistant Superintendent of Instruction and Pupil Services.
Great. Good evening, President Bagdad Sarian, Superintendent Youssef, Trustees LaBelle, Pine, Smolin, and Gibran, and my fellow colleagues. It's with heartfelt gratitude and excitement to accept the position of Assistant Superintendent of Instruction and Pupil Services. I'm honored to have been selected for this esteemed role. And I am eager to continue to contribute my skills, experience, and dedication to the success of Simi Valley Unified. I'd like to also take a moment to acknowledge and appreciate my family, my husband Brian and my daughter Shane Kyla, who are here tonight. They are here to support me today and every day. Together, we face numerous obstacles and celebrated countless victories. I'm truly blessed to always have them by my side. It's with my sincere appreciation to each member of the Board for placing your trust in me. I'm fully committed to upholding the highest standards of educational excellence and working collaboratively with all community members to ensure the success and well-being of every student within our district. I'm thrilled to continue working with the exceptional team of educators, administrators, and staff here in Simi Valley. Together, we strive to create a supportive and inclusive learning environment where every student thrives academically, socially, and emotionally. I'm dedicated to foster a culture of collaboration, innovation, and continuous improvement guided by research-based best practices and a deep commitment to student-centered education. As an Assistant Superintendent, I will actively support our Superintendent Dr. Youssef and the Board in executing the district's vision, implementing strategic initiatives, and cultivating a positive school culture that empowers students, teachers, and administrators to reach their full potential. I will work diligently to promote equitable educational opportunities, nurture strong partnerships, and ensure effective communication with all community members. I'm confident that my background as a classroom teacher, site, and district administrator will enable me to contribute effectively to the district's goals and objectives. I'm committed to professional growth and will continue to stay abreast of the latest educational research, emerging trends, and best practices to provide strong leadership in our ever-evolving educational landscape. Once again, I thank you for this incredible opportunity. I'm eager to begin this journey and contribute to the exceptional educational experiences we will provide to our students.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jamie. Congratulations.
Congrats, good luck. Thanks to the families for being here too and being the support system that allows these administrators to do what they do. So, thank you.
I think that leads to a special dinner prepared by the husbands and the daughters for the, it would be a nice touch.
Let me just add my congratulations. And I do want it out in the open publicly that my vote had nothing to do with you. You know how much I admire you. I hope you know. And I know you'll do a fantastic job in this new position. It was more having to do with the structure of the proposal. But I also knew you'd get the votes needed. So good luck. I know you don't need it. And I look forward to seeing more amazement from you. Item 2.5 pertains to final action by the Board regarding the recommendation to approve the agreement of employment of the district's local agency executive. Dr. Hani Youssef in the position of Superintendent. The recommended salary increase is $10,578.85 and with medical benefits provided to other managers. Other compensation elements are listed in the agreement.
Is this where the discussion happens?
In addition to?
No.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by LaBelle, seconded by Gibran. Roll call vote, Trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Who's?
Oh, mine was off?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call vote, Trustee Pine?
Aye.
Trustee Smolin?
Aye.
Trustee Gibran?
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle?
Aye.
President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye.
Congratulations, fearless leader. Look forward to another great year. Take some time off this summer and let's hit the ground running next year.
Team, team effort all the way around.
Sure.
All the way around.
Okay, moving on to item three, Educational Services, 3.1, Approval of Acceptance of Gifts for Simi Valley Unified School District 2023-2024.
According to Board Policy 3290, when a dollar value of a gift exceeds $500, it is to be submitted to the Board of Education for acceptance and acknowledgement. We had a great amount of them this time. The PTSA from Big Springs gave a total of $14,902.70 for various activities. Cash in the amount of $3,269.50 from the Maroon Girls Soccer Boosters donated to Simi Valley High School for coaching stipends. Cash in the amount of $2,218 from Simi Softball Booster Club Incorporated donated to Simi Valley High School for coaching stipend. Cash in the amount of $1,000 from Simi Dental Care and donated to Hillside, supported their band program. Cash in the amount of $5,000 from Caitlin Scarborough Memorial Scholarship Fund and donated to Santa Susana High School. Cash in the amount of $1,500 from Marcella Ponse and donated to Santa Susana High School to support instrumental music. Cash in the amount of $5,000 from the Verdugo Hills Chapter Suite Adelines International, donated to Simi Valley High School to pay for coral expenses. Cash in the amount of $3,722.16 from the Simi Valley Boosters donated to Simi Valley for coaching stipend. An Amazon gift card in the amount of $500 An Amazon gift card in the amount of $500 from Busy Hands Garden Club donated to Simi Valley High School to assist in tobacco awareness on campus. Cash in the amount of $600 from Rune Girls Soccer donated to Montevista to use towards agriculture and horticulture. Cash in the amount of $4,927.81 from Wood Ranch PTA to help pay for classroom supplies. Cash in the amount of $1,000 from Brad Watkins Masonary Incorporated donated to Sinaloa Middle School, support National Junior Honor Society. Cash in the amount of $2,511.21 from Crestview PTA donated to Crestview to pay for library and extra hours and school buses. Cash in the amount of $3,000, $3,000 from Sycamore PTA donated to Sycamore Elementary School for chairs in the NPR. On this, along with this loan, $49,151.38 and total to date, $327,665.70.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Smolin, seconded by Bagdad Sarian, roll call vote, trustee Pine.
Aye.
Trustee Smolin.
Aye.
Trustee Gibran.
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle.
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Item four, Student Support Services, none. Item five, Business and Facilities, 5.1, Adoption of Resolution Number 2-23/24, Certification of Verified Authorized Signatures of Members of the Governing Board and Employees Authorized to Sign Orders Drawn on the Funds of the Simi Valley Unified School District. Item 5.2.
We're gonna need to take action on those.
Yeah, sorry.
Motion on 5.1.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Smolin, seconded by LaBelle, roll call vote, trustee Pine.
Aye.
Trustee Smolin.
Aye.
Trustee Gibran.
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle.
Aye.
President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Item 5.2, Adoption of Resolution Number 3-23/24, Authority for the Board of Education to Improve Compensation for Certain Categories of Employees After July 1st, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Smolin, seconded by Pine, roll call vote, trustee Pine.
Aye.
Trustee Smolin.
Aye.
Trustee Gibran.
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle.
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Item 5.3, Adoption of Resolution Number 4-23/24, Approval of the Use of Proposition 55 Education Protection Account EPA 2023-2024, Funded Amounts.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Motion by Pine, seconded by Bagdad Sarian, roll call vote, trustee Pine.
Aye.
Trustee Smolin.
Aye.
Trustee Gibran.
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle.
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Item 5.4, Adoption of Resolution Number 5-23/24, Authorized Agent to Approve Application for Federal and State Projects.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Smolin, seconded by Bagdad Sarian, roll call vote, trustee Pine.
Aye.
Trustee Smolin.
Aye.
Trustee Gibran.
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle.
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Item 5.5, Adoption of Resolution Number 6-23/24, Delegating Authority to Superintendent or Designees for Continuing Operations During Summer Months.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pine, seconded by Bagdad Sarian, roll call vote, trustee Pine.
Aye.
Trustee Smolin.
Aye.
Trustee Gibran.
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle.
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Item 5.6, Adoption of Resolution Number 1-23/24, Participating in Bids/Contracts of Other Public Corporations and Agencies, Piggyback Contracts Throughout the 2023-2024 Fiscal Year.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Smolin, seconded by Pine, roll call vote, trustee Pine.
Aye.
Trustee Smolin.
Aye.
Trustee Gibran.
Aye.
Clerk LaBelle.
Aye.
And President Bagdad Sarian.
Aye. Moving on to H, Information Calendar, Item 1, Board/Administration, None. Item 2, Personnel Services, 2.1, First Reading of Revised Board Policy 4119.1, 4219.1, 4319.1, Civil and Legal Rights.
Information only.
Sorry, just trying to. 2.2, First Reading of Revised Board Policy 4140, 4240, 4340, Bargaining Units.
Information only.
Item 2.3, First Reading of Revised Administrative Regulations 4161.2, 4261.2, 4361.2, Personal Leads.
Information only.
Item 3, Educational Services, 3.1, First Reading of Board Policy 5146, Married/Pregnant/Parenting Students. Item 3.2, First Reading of Board Policy 5132, Dress and Grooming. Item 3.3, Information Regarding the Annual Update for Developing the 2023-2024 Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP, the Local Control Funding Formula, LCFF, Budget Overview for Parents, and the 2023-2024 Local Indicators.
Thank you, President Bagdad Sarian. As mandated by the Local Control Funding Formula, every public school district in the state of California must prepare a plan to show how we are spending and supporting funds on our students, specifically the student populations that I know all of you have heard us talk about before, socioeconomic disadvantaged students, English learners, and foster youth. Dr. Block is the school district's LCAP chairperson, and with that, Dr. Block, floor is all yours.
Thank you, good evening trustees. So for this year's LCAP, wanted to talk a little bit how it's changed and how it's evolved over the years. So this is our strategic plan on how we're going to support the learning for our unduplicated pupil population, based on the state's eight priorities. So our unduplicated pupil population consists of our English learners, our foster youth, and our socio-economically disadvantaged students. And in Simi Valley, that's approximately 46% of our student population. So to support those students, we receive from the state supplemental funding above and beyond our base grant. And so previously, we've used our LCAP as our overall strategic plan for the district, encompassing all of our funding sources. But to honor the original purpose of the LCAP, we've created a separate district single plan for student achievement that will assume the role of the overall strategic plan for our district, and the LCAP will be specifically for our unduplicated pupil population. Through this presentation, we'll talk about the action items both in the LCAP and the overarching DCPSA. So the eight state priorities that are addressed in the LCAP, everything from basic services, implementation of the state's standards, parent, community involvement, student achievement, student engagement, school climate, access to a broad curriculum, and other outcomes. And each of our goals are aligned to at least one of these priorities. So how have we been doing in terms of supporting our students? So based on family surveys that we administered back in December, 94.3% of our families say their child has received excellent instruction this year or are neutral about it. 93.2% say their child feels connected to their school and teachers. 92.3% say their child enjoys going to school this year. 92.1% say their child feels safe at school, including from bullying or cyberbullying. And 98.9% say when they call or visit the school, the office staff is friendly and helpful. So I think these numbers are absolutely fantastic. And one quote that I pulled from the survey, "My child has been treated with respect and dignity her entire time at school. I appreciate all who have helped guide her to this point in the everyday interactions, keeping her accountable, listening, supporting her ideas." So the budget for this year's LCAP, out of an approximate total budget of around $239 million, 14.8 million is expended in the LCAP, again primarily from those supplemental funds dedicated to our unduplicated students. So what is in the LCAP? So the LCAP is really focused around the board goals that this board adopted recently. And so how do we achieve those goals? So first, we start by identifying metrics. What would it mean to accomplish each of our goals? And set those goals and those metrics for the goal? Then we ask, what actions can we take to meet those goals that will help us achieve those metrics? What resources are we going to need to support those actions? And then we collect the data on an ongoing basis to make sure we are in fact meeting those metrics and meeting those goals. So as we approved, or as the board approved a few months ago, we have four goals, student learning, professional learning, family and community outreach, student and school safety and engagement. So first goal is student learning, and you can see, this is not a fully complete slide, but it is the highlights of each goal. So metrics include things from A to G rate, DNF rates, graduation rates, CASP scores, English learner reclassification, attendance rates, and benchmark assessments, among others. And then you can see the LCAP actions, which again are for our unduplicated pupil populations, include, and not solely for our unduplicated pupil populations, but dual enrollment opportunities for students, college and career counselors, ELD support, credit recovery opportunities, support for our foster and homeless youth, interventionists for ELA and math, classroom paraprofessionals, and field trips. And then you can see under additional district CIPS actions, these are what would have been in our LCAP previously but are now just in our overall strategic plan. So you can see things such as purchasing CTE equipment to keep our classes with industry standards, our A to G task force, maintaining elementary counselors and high school counselors, supporting CTE classes including at SICE, new textbooks and supplementals, student technology, updating library books, purchasing music instruments, updating makerspaces, and providing supplies for our visual arts programs. For Goal 2, Professional Learning, metrics include attending professional development opportunities, training teachers in standards-aligned instructional materials, making sure we have fully credentialed teachers in all of our classrooms, supporting all students to have access to rigorous grade-level coursework, and continuing to grow in our work in becoming a professional learning community. Actions in the LCAP, training for our dual immersion program, dual-language immersion program, our equal-opportunity schools, training teachers on how to support students in their classes, training on AP and IB courses, providing three days of professional development to our staff, supporting induction for our new teachers and administrators, maintaining our TOSSAs who can support and provide professional development to teachers, professional development and response to intervention, and multi-tiered systems of support, exploring the co-teaching model, so how do we mainstream our students with special needs into our classes? How do we support our students who are English learners in our college prep level classes and on grade-level classes? And participating in CAPS PLC training. In addition, in our DCPSA, we have articulation of CTE pathways with our community colleges, two days of onboarding for our new teachers, providing training on Medal of Honor curriculum, maintaining nine elementary physical education teachers who support PLC collaboration time at the elementary schools, in addition to the four days of PLC collaboration that was part of our collective bargaining agreement this year.
Dr. Block, can you define that acronym?
Which one?
DCPSA.
DCPSA is something that we invented, District Single Plan for Student Achievement. So it really is our district strategic plan on what we want to accomplish this year. Same goals as our LCAP, it's just expanded beyond the LCAP.
All right, I had some context clues, but yeah, thank you for defining that.
Education is full of acronyms.
Yeah, Dr. Block came up with the idea, so the way the LCAP works, what's required to be in the LCAP doesn't do justice to everything we're doing for students. So he created the District Single Plan for Student Achievement to supplement everything else that doesn't go into the LCAP.
And the reason why we chose that term was each school is required to create their single plan for student achievement for their school site, and it needs to parallel what we're doing at the district level. So it really is a continuum, what we're doing at the district should be what's happening at the school sites. Goal 3, Family and Community Outreach, metrics include family participation in the LCAP surveys, signing up for weekly ARI's emails, maintaining our district and school websites, district-wide PTA memberships. Some of our actions include in the LCAP, marketing our connected learning pathways, providing parent education workshops, maintaining a public information officer, and maintaining community liaisons and interpreters. And in the DCPSA, participating in various community activities and promoting the importance of various advisory committees so we can recruit more volunteers to be part of the process of supporting our students. And finally, Goal 4, Student and School Safety and Engagement, metrics include suspension rates, expulsion rates, social-emotional learning, survey data, attendance rates, facilities inspection tool. In the LCAP, supporting student clubs, organizations, athletic teams to promote student engagement, promoting protocols and structures to identify social, emotionally at-risk students, and hiring and maintaining campus supervisors at all school sites. And in addition, in the district CIPS, anti-bullying assemblies, maintaining our district mental health and student wellness website, maintaining our elementary counselors, adopting a district-wide positive behavior management program, maintaining our tobacco use prevention program, modernizing our classrooms, supporting every 15 minutes Junior Olympics, Special Olympics, supporting and maintaining the WE TIP system, maintaining two social workers, participating, I'm sorry, partnering with Daybreak Counseling, and updating our NPR and theater equipment. Next steps would be at our June 27th special board meeting, hopefully LCAP approval, and then once it's approved, we are required to submit this to the County Office of Education. Any questions?
I have some questions. The professional development slide, there was the mention of three professional development days and then the four PLC days, does the three, is that in addition to the four?
So the three professional development days have been part of our calendars for years. They are, so teachers traditionally have worked 185 days while there's 180 school days. So those extra five days have been two days of prep and then three days of professional development. So that has always been part of our calendar. And then the four additional days specifically for professional learning communities was what we just agreed to with our collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, thank you. And then with the benchmark assessments, where does the data for those come from?
So at this point, they are our STAR assessments for reading and math, but our individual PLTs at the school sites are working on creating common formative assessments, and that is part of the process of developing as a PLC. So those will continue to be developed and be administered, and then the PLTs review the data together collectively.
Is that going to, like, when we get to the core, the common core assessments, will those data also be reported out?
Yes, absolutely. Once we have our CASP data, we will do a presentation on how that was. Prelimarily, it looks very good, but the data is not finalized yet.
Great, thank you. And then I think my last question is for the family participation in the LCAP survey. I know, you know, obviously every year we get a report of, you know, what the results are, and I haven't done a comparison, but do you know?
are, and I haven't done a comparison, but do you know if it has been increasing?
Unfortunately, it has been decreasing, and I think, you know, we saw a high during the pandemic when everybody had quite a few opinions to share. Unfortunately, the number of responses have gone down, and maybe that is because of satisfaction, I would like to think. Our numbers are very positive from the families that did respond.
Right.
That is the only reason I can think of, of why it's lower now.
Or maybe it's going back to the, the normal it was before the pandemic. Okay, yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to maybe make comment. Priscilla and I kind of eyed each other at, at moments during your presentation, mostly on, under the DCPSA classification, but there's a lot of information there that is reliant upon volunteers and people getting involved. Would you agree?
I'm sorry, on this slide here?
Well, when I'm looking at things like every fifteen minutes junior Olympics, things like that, which are completely volunteer-based and run.
And it would be making sure that we are good partners to the volunteers and that we are fully supportive of it, and however we can support those activities, because they are so important to our students.
I know they are, and I, and I do know that there's a, definitely a, a big partnership between the district as far as sites and personnel and, and support.
And really to, because it is of such great value, to memorialize it in this document.
Yeah, I just appreciate the fact that the volunteers and their work and their contributions are, are added.
Could you speak to and define a little bit more the Positive Behavior Management Program?
Absolutely. So our sites are working on identifying various programs. For example, many of our middle schools years ago adopted a CHAMP's program to teach students what the behavioral expectations are at the sites. So it is the idea of, one, front-loading behavior expectations and identifying ways of consistently implementing that so that, one, we have consistency across our district, but two, we are being purposeful in communicating to students what we expect behavior to be. And so really just, again, not that that doesn't happen, but being more systematic with how it happens and being more consistent with the way it's implemented.
So you're establishing it upfront, and then it's also a follow-up, should those expectations not be met?
Exactly. So the expectations of what we expect students to do, and also what the consequences are if they don't do it, and what we can do to reward the students for good behavior. And so it's, it's kind of a two-pronged approach, you know, promoting positive behavior and, you know, expressing to students what will happen if they don't follow those rules. We're also working on, under the leadership of Dr. Snodgrass and Mr. Guzzo, a secondary discipline matrix of behaviors and consequences. So again, there's a level of consistency between our schools.
As always, well done.
Thank you.
It's very, I think it's very useful to see it laid out this way, because obviously there are things that we have to cover, and it's nice to see the things that we're doing that are above and beyond what we actually have to cover. So I appreciate the work that was put into that.
Thank you.
And also, Dr. Block works closely with a parent advisory committee annually and a district advisory committee in addition to our site administrators and our cabinet team. So it's a complete team effort. And this is actually, as he mentioned, next steps is coming to the board for approval in its finished, finished state at the end of June, along with a budget presentation from Mr. Toto that aligns with all this.
I also appreciated the district-wide membership in PTA and, and the new options to be able to pay that are web-based as opposed to breaking out a check. So I think a lot of us are members up here in, in this room, so.
So we have to move, we're not approving.
No.
It's just information.
Just information.
Like, we're not moving to approve.
That'll, that'll be the end of June.
Correct.
Okay.
It was the pause that got me.
Item four, student support services, none. Item five, business and facilities. Five point one, information regarding the proposed budget for twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four.
Information only, we had a public hearing earlier as well.
Item five point two, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, CPAC, annual report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, which we already had. Item five point three, award of least lease-back contracts.
Okay, so here's the information. Title one, award of lease, lease-back contracts under business and facilities, information number three, prepared by Ron Toto. Royal High School project on August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, the board adopted the procedures and guidelines for the award of lease, lease-back contracts. On November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, a request for proposals was issued seeking pre-construction and lease, lease-back services for Royal High School modernization products, projects. The RFP set forth the criteria based on the qualifications and the price and the method in which the proposals were, were to be evaluated. The district received four proposals, and after scoring the proposals and interviewing the firms, Belford Beatty Construction LLC received the highest score and is therefore the best value to the district. On January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Education approved Belford Beatty Construction LLC as the least lease-back contractor for the projects at Royal High School. The district requested, requested a GMP proposal for construction services from Belford Beatty Construction LLC for the following projects: the classroom renovation project, phase one at Royal High School, consent number eighteen. After reviewing and negotiating the proposal, the proposal was deemed complete and qualified and therefore the best value to the district. Simi Valley High School project. On August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, the board adopted procedures and guidelines for awarding, for award of the least lease-back contracts. On November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, a request for proposals was issued seeking pre-construction and lease, lease-back services for the Simi High School modernization product, projects. The RFP set forth a criteria based on the qualifications and price and with the method in which the proposals were to be evaluated. The district received four proposals, and after scoring the proposals and interviewing the firms, NEF Construction Incorporated received the highest score and is therefore the best value to the district. On January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Education approved NEF Construction Incorporated as the least lease-back contractor for the projects at Simi Valley High School. The district requested a GMP proposal for construction services from NEF Construction Incorporated for the following projects: the boys' locker room project at Simi Valley High School, consent number nineteen, and the girls' locker room project at Simi Valley High School, consent number twenty. After reviewing and negotiating the proposal, and the, the proposal was deemed complete and qualified and therefore the best value to the district.
Thank you, trustee Smolins. Item I, announcements. One, June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, four PM, special board meeting, LCAP and proposed budget, district office, one oh one West Cochran Street, Simi Valley, California, nine three zero six five. Item J, adjournment. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, great job.